Good afternoon, all. The Board of County Commissioners Workshop will convene. If we could rise for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for First and foremost, I'd like to thank, obviously, Drew Chauncey for being here. I think these partnerships have been long and really beneficial to have discussions like this, and it's great that you had an opportunity to come on over and join us. But I'll turn it over to the county manager for his opening comments, but thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, we have two topics of discussion this afternoon. The first one, of course, is from Drew Bartlett, who is with the South Florida Water Management District as Executive Director. But I'd like to ask Dave Harner to make the introduction, and then Commissioners, once that's finished in, we'll move right into, after a short break, into our first budget conversation of the season. Dave?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. At our October 6 Basin Management Action Plan Workshop, the Board discussed a number of topics, more specifically about BOMA. Some of the questions that came up about BOMA was when, what is happening. Shortly after that meeting, we reached out to South Florida Water Management. Today, we have both Chairman Goss and Executive Director Drew Bartlett here to talk to us. Today, they're going to present not only about BOMA, but they're going to talk a little bit about Lake O, the Kalusahatchee watershed, also some major projects that are happening that benefit Southwest Florida. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Chairman Goss.
Good morning, afternoon, sorry. Good afternoon, thanks. Mr. Chairman, it's nice to see you. It's nice to see you in that role. I've never had this relationship. It's good to see you there, Kevin. Thanks for letting us come and present to you. I'm Chauncey Goss. I'm Chairman of the South Florida Water Management District, and what a lot of people don't realize is how big the district is. It runs from Orlando all the way down to the Keys, and we've got 1,400 employees. We've got a billion-plus-dollar budget. So this guy, Drew Bartlett, who's about to present to us, has a lot on his plate all the time, and we're, most of you know Drew, but we're incredibly lucky to have him. He's been around for a long time with the DEP, with EPA before that. He knows Lee County well. He knows Lee County's issues well. Every time I pick up the phone and call him, he gets right back to me, and he knows exactly what I'm going to usually talk to him about. So that's always good. So sometimes the district gets a rap for not paying much attention to the West Coast, but we do, and Drew does, and as you're about to see, we've got some great projects going. So I'm really excited to introduce Drew and have him. Go ahead.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. It's an absolute pleasure for me to be here, and I really appreciate the invitation to show you what we're doing and how we're staying busy. And keep this picture in mind, because I'll get to it later, but that's a very exciting picture of a very important project that the district is working on. You may recall that four days after inauguration, Governor DeSantis signed his first executive order on the environment, really challenging DEP and the water management districts with improving water quality and getting the job done. And he set forth 29 priority projects, all highlighted on the map on the right, to challenge the South Florida Water Management District with getting done, to really help with what happened over that previous summer of 2018, before he was inaugurated, to Lee County, and to address the issues that you guys experienced during that summer, which, of course, we'll get into. So it all starts with, you know, basing all of your decisions in science. And as you know, if you see these maps, these don't, I'm not going to ask you to interpret them, because they will hurt your eyes, but it kind of is a reflection of the activity that's going on in the South Florida Water Management District with respect to water resources and water quality. And on the left, you will see that the Governing Board last year approved expanding the monitoring network so that we could get a handle on much more precise science when it comes to water quality in the Kalusahatchee estuary and Lake Okeechobee, which feeds the Kalusahatchee estuary. We want to make sure that we're building things and deploying the solutions that are necessary to solve the problems. And when it comes to Lake Okeechobee and Kalusahatchee estuary, there's such an intimate relationship there, which is water quality and quality-related. On the right, that's just all the activities. We highlight every project that the district's working on in the areas, just to keep our eye on the ball and make sure we don't miss out on all the opportunities that we have before us to make a difference while we're here. So like I said, all discussions really start with Lake Okeechobee in the South Florida Water Management District. And as you can see on the map on the left, Lake Okeechobee is connected to the Everglades, which are down south of Lake Okeechobee, and to the Kalusahatchee estuary, and to the St. Lucy estuary on the West and East Coast, respectively. And if Lake Okeechobee isn't managed right, then everybody else has a hard time, whether you're an estuary or the Everglades. And so I want to spend some time talking about everything that's going on around Lake Okeechobee, because if we don't fix and get better operations on Lake Okeechobee and better water quality on Lake Okeechobee, then the Kalusahatchee estuary is impacted. And so that's the focus of the South Florida Water Management District. So I'm going to start north of Lake Okeechobee. And for the past two fiscal years, we've gotten $50 million from the state legislature to start building storage north of the lake. Now, when you talk about Lake Okeechobee, if it gets too full, it dumps to the Kalusahatchee estuary, and that's what we don't want. And so October Storage and Recovery is systems that the legislature is funding. That's basically storage systems north of Lake Okeechobee. So when the lake is filling up, we can divert that to a storage device, so it's not going into the lake and raising lake levels. The same with the Kissimmee and Headwaters Project. Those are the lakes up just south of Orlando in Kissimmee, holding more water in the lakes. That project is landing. The Kissimmee River is getting restored this year. That will go into effect this year, and then we'll be able to hold more water up in the upper chain of lakes, so it doesn't get to the lake and fill it up too quickly. And then, of course, we have dispersed water management projects. That's just partnerships with local landowners to hold a lot more water on their lands. That's close to 50, to, about to slip into Lake Okeechobee speak, which is acre feet. When we talk about storing water around Lake Okeechobee, just remember this: An acre foot is an acre of land with one foot of water on it, okay? And so when you add that up, two acre feet is two acres of land with one foot of water on it. And so one foot on Lake Okeechobee is about 450,000 acre feet. So that's a, I've got that penciled in the arm of my notebook. 450,000 acre feet equals one foot on Lake Okeechobee, because we look at Lake Okeechobee with a hawk's eye, and when it gets too high, we have to dump it, and that's what we don't want to do. So dispersed water management, again, managing the acre feet on Lake Okeechobee. Lakeside Ranch Stormwater Treatment Area, Brady Ranch Flow Equalization Basin. I'm sorry, but these are all engineering terms. Those are all holding water on land, having them interact with plants, so that plants can take out the nutrients, and then we deliver clean water to its receiving source, which is Lake Okeechobee in this case. So those are a lot of the projects we're doing north of Lake Okeechobee. But let's talk about flowing water south out of Lake Okeechobee, too. Again, when the lake gets too full, we need to put the water somewhere besides the Kalusahatchee estuary. And so this is a cornerstone project that the Water Management District is focused on, and that is building a massive reservoir south of Lake Okeechobee, so we can move water out of the lake into that reservoir. About a half a foot of water can get, can fit into that, half a foot of water from Lake Okeechobee can fit into that reservoir. And when you're thinking about feet on Lake Okeechobee, you're in, called the A2 West STA, that's a stormwater treatment area to clean the water out of the reservoir and send it to the Everglades. The reservoir, the core is building. We're under construction on the stormwater treatment area, and we anticipate the core to break ground on construction of the reservoir this year. So, and 2023, and then we'll have another way to convey water out of Lake Okeechobee to the Everglades, and then a component to the west, they call the A2 West STA, that's a stormwater treatment area to clean the water out of the reservoir and send it to the Everglades. The reservoir, the core is building. We're under construction on the stormwater treatment area, and we anticipate the core to break ground on construction of the reservoir this year. So, and the STA will be done in 2023, and then we'll have another way to convey water out of Lake Okeechobee to the Everglades, and then, again, providing a relief valve to sending it to the estuaries. So let's look at Lake Okeechobee and the level that it's at today, right? So I talked about the three-foot range. Do I have a, so right in here, between 16, like, maybe really 12 and 1/2 to 15 and 1/2, you want to keep it kind of in this range where the colors are. This is the lake level as of March 8, and what we do every month is we look at what could happen in the future. And these are all model projections. So right now, that's March 8. The level is right a little under 15 and 1/2, and then we look at what could happen in the future based on history, based on raining, not raining, lake operations. And the 50th percentile, so these are all, the red line is the 50th percentile, 75th percentile, 25th percentile. But if you don't speak percentile, this is the average of what has happened over the, in the past, and about half the time, it's between these two lines, right here. So what we're seeing here is it's the dry season, it's the drier part of the dry season. So we're hoping the lake, with operations as we have them going right now, will come down. And what happens when it comes down is it creates capacity during the rainy season for it to rise back up. And what we don't want to happen is it to rise up into this range up here at the upper end. The lake does not follow these lines. The lake does what Mother Nature tells it to do, but this is an average of history, okay? So right now, we're looking at lake operations, trying to get as much water out of the lake as possible, because you really want to be in this range down here, not up here. But we don't need to get water out of the lake in a harmful way. We need to get it out in a healthy way right now, because we have that opportunity. If anyone has any questions, please feel free to ask during the presentation. Chairman?
I just wondered if you wanted to have our...
It's much better than me blathering, yeah.
So, I would say...
The concern is where we are right now in the lake, and, you know, just want to make sure we're pressing all the right levels. Certainly, I want to see us do all we can to lower the lake as much as we can. We're receiving maximum discharges. I'd like all partners to receive maximum discharges, both west, east, and south. This reminds me of '16, almost identical, and we received harmful discharges from May through October. The lake levels are pretty almost identical when I look at the two paths. And just concern, just want to voice my concern now in March. I mean, I know we're hoping for a lot of things, but we're two feet higher on the lake, and, you know, there's a lot of discussions around Lowesum that people are having, but, I mean, here's a real live example of why we need to look at, because I applaud you for everything you're going to do from a project point of view, but this is going to be the mechanism that we have until these projects come online. So, again, from, you know, someone that's been involved in this and worked with you for a long time, I'm just really just trying to emphasize that we press every lever, west, east, and south, as much as we can, because it's just, reminds me of '16, and '16 was an ugly year.
Mm-hmm. I'm with your chairman, and I'm telling you, I'm not wringing my hands here. I was wringing my hands here, and probably before, because you're right, this is much higher than where we want to be. And so we are, we're pushing water everywhere we can, and the reason I say in a non-harmful way, we're trying to stay within ecological envelopes everywhere we're pushing it, because we don't want to start harmful discharges now, and then Mother Nature rolls us the dice and gives us harmful discharges for nine months, right? And so every morning I wake up, I look at salinity in the Kalusahatchee, and I look at salinity in the St. Lucy estuary and Lakewood Lagoon. I ask about our stormwater treatment areas. Can I open up more flowways? I call West Palm Beach and say, we'll top you off. You know, we're going to send water wherever we can, but I'm absolutely with you. It's, now's the time to move water out of the lake as possible, but let's not do it in a harmful way. But it is going east, it is going west, and we're riding salinities.
The other thing, obviously, that gives me some anxiety is, obviously, the red tide that's out there, and, you know, it wasn't long ago where we were dealing with a catastrophe. So with maximum releases or harmful discharges, it just certainly doesn't have the right ingredients, so just trying to put our concerns on record.
Right. And by maximum releases, so we are, we're in the ecological zone of the Kalusahatchee right now, at the top end, I will, you know, admit. And so my message to the core, which is really their decision ultimately, is if we start to see salinity dip and to see conditions not good for oysters or seagrass, let's change. Let's back off.
You and I spoke about that over the phone. I just want to make sure that all players feel the adversity equally, proportionally, and what they're able to do at the maximum amount is going to help us for a better wet season. Will we do that now? Thank you.
And the chairman raises a very good point, is there's a very important effort going on right now. It's called the Lake Okeechobee System Operating Manual, and this is the core's exercise of looking at how they can operate the lake differently, given that the Herbert Hoover Dyke is coming, is getting repaired and will be repaired by 2022, right? So with a repaired Herbert Hoover Dyke, you can generally speaking, add another foot of water on the lake, you know, depends on where you are in the year and all that kind of stuff, but that gives them a lot more operating flexibility. Also, not shortly after 2022, we'll have the C-43 reservoir online. We'll have a reservoir on the East Coast, the C-44, online this year, and we'll have another stormwater treatment area south to move extra water south. So right now, they're in the process of looking at initial arrays of schedules. That's a modeling exercise of just looking at about 14 different options, you know, just thinking myopically, if you will, about a single estuary or a single endpoint being water supply or Everglades. But after that, in the May timeframe, we'll be talking about, okay, how do we balance those schedules, so that we got balance for East Coast, West Coast, Everglades, water supply, everything, because we're going to have a repaired Herbert Hoover Dyke, and so it will get better. It's just, you know, how do we balance everything to get it better, so that everybody is winning in a good way? And I'm, you know, I'm optimistic that we are, have good, smart people at the table that can figure out how to get the best out of a repaired dyke as possible. And so that, coupled with projects on the West Coast, you will see some benefits. And so I wanted to basically go through some of the projects that we have going on, west of Lake Okeechobee, that would benefit the estuary, so I will do that now. This is a summary of them, but let's go project by project. So up in the top of the estuary here is Lake Hickpachi, then we'll talk about BOMA, then we'll talk about the C-43 reservoir. I believe that's the order. So this is what we call the Lake Hickpachi Project. Phase 1 FEB came online over the past year, and what this is, and what the name of the game is, in South Florida, we have canals that go to water bodies in sort of a shotgun way, and that's not good for those water bodies. And so the name of the game is grabbing that water, putting it on the landscape, and metering it out, you know, in a beneficial way, because when you waterslide water to a water body, generally you see harm, right? So in this basin, this is designed to capture the water that's coming from this area into the C-43 canal, and then shoots down to the estuary. It's a massive project. This is about $100 million project that we're, is under design right now, to be able to catch water coming from these canals, and then route it through these cells for treatment throughout this one, and then sheet-flow it across the landscape back in. And this is the inflow canal, so this will actually come off of the C-43 canal, intercept lake discharges or basin runoff that's hitting the C-43 canal. So it brings it up, sends it through cells, cleans the water, stores it for a while, and meters it back in a very natural way, instead of streamlining to the estuary. So that is one that's under design right now. It'll probably be a three-year project after design is finished, starting next year. And of course, we partner with DEP and Governor DeSantis to help fund all of these projects. We pick up the operations, and each STA is about $1 million per year to operate, $500,000 to $1 million to operate, so this, that's what this would cost, but that comes from our ad valorem. The construction is very beneficial. We get that from state resources. Now, here we go. And then Phase 3 is another expansion, so we own all this land already, and so then we expand it into Phase 3 as well, and get more water on the landscape, rather than the Kalusahatchee estuary in a harmful way. So this is the BOMA Flow Equalization Basin. We call it a flow equalization basin, just because that's an engineering term, but it's the same exact concept. And when Chauncey and I got into the Water Management District, one of the conversations I had with him was, you know, BOMA, it's time to put BOMA to work, right? We've had the land, we've been doing experiments on it, so let's use that amount of land to actually bring us as much benefits as possible for the land. So we embarked on conversations with the team at Lee County to pull together at least some berms to put water on it and use it like a stormwater treatment area. So what you have here is a preliminary design, where you can bring water off the C-43 canal, and then run it around BOMA this way, and then send it back after it has a chance to interact with the landscape. Nutrients get tricked in up with plants, and then it goes back in cleaner and in a better way for the C-43 canal, the Kalusahatchee estuary. One of the reasons BOMA was purchased was to try to figure out how to remove nitrogen, right? STAs and this kind of process works very well with phosphorus pollution, but less well, possibly, with nitrogen pollution. And so we're still doing research, partnering with the county, to try to figure out what's the best way to deal with the nitrogen that exists in the Kalusahatchee basin, but whatever we come up with will fit in this framework, right? So I think it's, we thought it's time to get started to build the skeleton, so that then we can use it to, whether we're doing more experience, experiments on nitrogen, we know nitrogen will be better, but, you know, this is something that is at least a first step regardless of what you do. Yes, Chairman?
Chauncey can answer for us. Is this something like Jordan Marsh? Characteristics of Jordan Marsh?
Yeah, yeah, very similar.
Okay, thanks.
The other thing we're doing is we are going to set up recreational opportunities here, so that you can access it. This is State Road 80 down here. So to access it, possibly put a boardwalk out, so there'd be some good recreational opportunities with this feature. We're also in conversation with Glade County, Glades County, about giving them opportunities to put up some commercial along State Road 80 as well, but it's not going to stop us with the design of this structure and get to work on it. It's, again, the price tag's about $100 million, certainly partnering with DEP and the state to try to get that constructed.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I think I'm just going to hand it out here.
It's been a little over 10 years, if memory serves me right, when Lee County partnered with you guys to buy BOMA, and, but we've been experimenting ever since, and I've been anxious for something to happen, and I'm glad to hear you describing, at least conceptually, what the district may have in mind there. Can you give me any hope on timing, that something has moved forward, and we're going to do something pretty soon?
Sure. Thank you for asking. Yes, it's under design right now, so we are designing. We got a contract out to design this. This is the preliminary design, so we're going to move towards 60%, so we can get permits for design. So I would see us breaking ground on this in 2022.
2022.
2022.
That's the best news I've heard in long...
Yep, and then being able to, it's probably be a two- or three-year project, try to get it set up. Yep.
Keep up the good work.
Oh, yeah. We're, I tell you, the governor challenged us. We did not want to disappoint him. And then the C-43 reservoir, this is the, you know, I talked about $100 million projects. This is the billion-dollar project, but this one is under construction. Obviously, here's the Kalusahatchee estuary, pull the water in, store it in these two cells, and then send it out during the dry season to meet Kalusahatchee estuary beneficial needs. It's 140,000, 170,000 acre feet of water. That's, you know, almost half a foot, probably 40% of a foot of lake water. So that's a big storage feature. If you've been out there, you, when you look across the landscape and you think about, wow, this is going to be covered in water, it's pretty impressive. And they are out there building right now. We have the inflow-outflow pump station absolutely underway. It's about 60%, 67% complete. And then we've started on the embankments on the cover slide. That was the first berm. It's been built. They're watching it to see if they're settling or anything like that, to make sure the proof of concept is there before they keep going. They're digging these seepage canals all around the perimeter. This is the outline of it. There will be seepage canals all around it, culverts, a berm down the middle, and they're building the berm on this side right now as we speak. And so it's underway. It's supposed to be done in July 2024, and, you know, that's going to be a heck of a difference-maker when it comes to storing water and trying to protect the Kalusahatchee estuary. But when Governor DeSantis took office, the big question was, this just stores water. What about the quality of the water in this reservoir? And so he charged us with coming up with a water quality component for the C-43 reservoir, and we partnered with Lee County and other governments in, around the reservoir, including Hendry County, to pull off in a very public way, a feasibility study to look at water qualities associated with this feature. And the two outcomes that came out of that is we need to think about water quality inside the reservoir, as the water is sitting in the reservoir, and as it gets delivered back to the environment. So the feasibility study produced for water going into the reservoir, and I was here in 2018 with all of you, and that was the big challenge we had, was what do we do with the algae we're cleaning up, right? And that was a real challenge, and so the last thing we need is a reservoir full of algae, right? And so the treatment technology that looked most cost-effective was treating it with alum. It's a very common stormwater practice. I don't know if Lee County has any alum systems, but there are certain alum systems around the state. So this is like the granddaddy of alum systems for stormwater treatment. But all alum does is it grabs particles, clumps them together, and then they fall out. And so the water gets clear, it doesn't have the nitrogen and phosphorus in it. It's about 60 to 70% effective. And so the water sitting in the estuary, I mean, in the reservoir, will be, not have as many nutrients in it, prevent some algae blooms, and then going out, we're looking at a stormwater treatment area-like project to run the water through, get some polishing out of it, and send it back to the environment after interacting with the environment through a wetland system first. So that's underway. The alum is under design, and they're still doing...
So, question number one that comes to mind, obviously, is with the alum component, is that going to create some muck on the bottom of the reservoir, similar to what's on the bottom of Lake Okeechobee?
But I'm certainly targeting trying to get the inflow treatment online simultaneous with the operation of the C-43 reservoir itself. So that was 2024.
Drew, I have some questions about that.
So, question number one that comes to mind, obviously, is with the alum component, is that going to create some muck on the bottom of the reservoir, similar to what's on the bottom of Lake Okeechobee?
It's still being designed, but that is a, it's not really as much of muck as sediment, so it will settle out in the bottom of it, and so there will be a maintenance element to it. So we would have to scrape it and do things like that, but once it's hit with alum, it stays on the bottom. It doesn't sort of flock like you would at Lake Okeechobee, so, because it's too heavy. So it's more of a sediment than that loose, mucky-type stuff.
But there would be a maintenance component, because could that reduce the capacity of the reservoir if it builds up too much, or...
I mean, they evaluated that, and if it builds up too much, but that would take a long time for it to build up too much.
Okay. Then my second question, I, on the post-storage water quality component to treat the discharges, we had talked about, previously, there's a property, we call it GS10, out in Lehigh Acres. It's a property we just did a management plan on today that's going to, you know, bring water in, clean it up, and then discharge it. Did y'all ever get anywhere on the idea of connecting that to, through, making connections to that through, to the C-43 reservoir, to have that as a treatment component of water?
I think that's what they're looking at now, is, under the siding piece of it, is to look at where best to, what the opportunities are with that, because not only do we have that, I don't have a map, we also have this land, too. That's land we own, and you're talking about over in this direction, right?
Yeah, that's the general direction. It looked like there were a couple of quick canal connections that could be made to get it into the GS10 property, and we approved a land management plan today. It certainly has opportunities to be funded, so, but I think it would do a lot of good for the area if you could use that as a component to treat.
I mean, and honestly, having two options, too. I mean, there's, you know, there's, it sounds like there would be benefits to looking at that.
Okay. What would be the next step if Lee County wanted to, you know, advocate for that to be part of, part of it? be part of, part of it?
Tell Roland. I mean, I'm hearing you, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's part of the sighting evaluation now that we're reviewing. We had that very question, so it's not, that part of the study's not complete yet, but they are going through the sighting analysis as, as he mentioned, and we certainly put that option out there as something we'd like to see further consideration.
Okay, because that was part of the dream when we got together for that meeting with Senator Benacristo and Rep Caldwell, yeah. Oh, it was a long time ago, but yeah, it was, it was part of the dream. Well, keep us in the loop on that or up to date on that.
I definitely look forward to that. That's something that I also recall very vividly, and this morning when I saw that get passed, I thought, that was always the thought, that we would have a connection there and utilize that land in the most significant way. So I remember those conversations, not as a commissioner, but remember them very vividly.
Right, I do too. Yep, feel good.
Before you leave, alum, I don't know where I'm in. I don't know about alum. Is this a new approach? It's been tried on a large scale anywhere? And if it works on 16 square miles of the C-43, why can't we preempt that and try it in Lake Okeechobee itself when blue-green algae appears there?
So alum is not a, it's not a new technology. It is, it's been around a long time. It's been used in wastewater treatment plants probably since the 70s, and it's, it's newer to stormwater treatment, but it's not new. It's been around in stormwater treatment since probably the 90s.
Isn't it kind of new to the water district?
It, for these kind of volumes, it is definitely new, right? But the, the concept is not new. It's just, you just use more alum, right?
My second part of the question is, how about Okeechobee?
And it's been looked at as a treatment technology for Okeechobee. The scale of it is very expensive. So to treat something the size of Lake Okeechobee, it's phenomenally expensive. It's just too big. And so it, it becomes cost prohibitive. But, you know, if the money was there, it's something you could engineer up to. I'm talking, I think last time someone did a cost estimate, it was.
Tell me if I'm saying this right, a great deal of our algae is produced in the Kalusahatchee River basin, and it doesn't all come from Okeechobee.
Have that right.
So that's why it would be valuable for us to try this in C-43.
Exactly. Good, yeah, exactly right. No matter where the water's coming from, you would have that information and that, you know, if it's just coming from the local basin, they would be able to manage that or if it's coming from.
How many years are we away from having water in C-43?
2024.
2024?
Yep.
Okey dokey, so you can start buying and storing the alum right now and get.
That's right. All right. So that's C-43, unless there's any other questions. And then the last thing I wanted to touch on locally was, I know we have a memorandum of agreement with the, with Lee County, signed in 2018 to help maintain natural conveyance capabilities. Of 13 primary waterways, these are where we are in either a completed or planned phase, certainly partnering with Lee County to do the outreach. And I know Chauncey, when you came on, you said, let's increase the amount of money we send towards that MOA. So it went from about 200 grand to about 850 grand. And I think that's, that's about right, you know, compared to how we can keep up with the public education piece of this, because you got to get the public involved before you go in and, and start doing these before and after pictures to their local waterways. But if, if we're able to do it faster, we can put more money towards it. So, but that's, that's just an effort we have specific to Lee County to help manage some of the waterways to provide better drainage before and after. But looking at, you know, what's coming at next year, Governor DeSantis asked for a monumental budget. You know, he pledged with his executive order, I mentioned at the beginning, 2.5 billion to water over his four-year term, and he didn't let up on that this, so this year, while legislature's in session, he's asked for 625 million more for Everglades and Water Resources. And when you're saying Everglades restoration, that doesn't just restore the Everglades, it also restores the estuaries because it's taking those harmful discharges and sending them to the Everglades where they're needed. That's the basics of it. And then he's got more for springs, water quality, which we're taking advantage of, trying to apply for the water quality funds, really to improve Lake Okeechobee water quality and Kalusahatchee, because that's where we're looking at some projects in the Kalusahatchee watershed. And then, you know, just some of the others, there's 25 million for harmful algae blooms and Red Tide, that's the research through FWC. And the other big item that was new this year is a billion over four years for coastal resiliency grants, something that we're very excited about because as we plan for sea level rise and our, along the South Florida Water Management District coastline. So what I want to end on is, is getting back to acre feet, right? And, and so this is acre feet. Remember, Lake Okeechobee, one foot on Lake Okeechobee is about 450 acre feet right here. And so this is grafted going year by year, giving our construction schedule. And this is project south of the lake is this line, the Lake Okeechobee watershed, the Kalusahatchee estuary, and the St. Lucie estuary. So these are basic, south, north, west, and east. And so when you, when you move on, the C-44 reservoir coming on this year, the storage volume available to Lake Okeechobee goes up. Then you get to 2024 and the C-23, C-43 reservoir comes online, and then we start getting the STA south of the lake, and now you're up to 600. Then you go to 2026, the Kissimmee headwaters actually gets implemented after the Kissimmee River restoration. And then you have more storage south of the lake through restoration strategies, which is building STAs and storage devices south of the lake. At that point, you're up to almost two feet on the lake. And then we add the EAA reservoir by 2029. Then we have a number of wells that are getting funded by the legislature for ASR coming on in potentially 2027, and then a reservoir on the East Coast bumping it up to almost three feet on the lake. And then there's a couple more reservoirs and the rest of ASR coming online possibly by 2030, depending on appropriations, which seem to be flowing right now. So when you're talking about managing lake fluctuations going up and down, the more you can put in other places, the less is threatening the estuaries. And so over time, and this is easily our lifetime, right? And there was a joke early on in SEP where we wouldn't see these things in our lifetime. With the support we're getting now, this is all very real and doable. And so we're seeing the, getting the tools, the infrastructure online to manage almost three feet of water around Lake Okeechobee to really help with those storms and surges. And so that's exciting times, and I certainly hope, I mean, we'll witness this. I mean, that's the, that's, that's the exciting part of it. And so just wanted to end on that kind of positive note, but I really thank you for inviting me over and being able to tell you what we're doing, but happy to have any kind of conversation with you at this point.
I'd just like to say thank you back, Mr. Partland. In my previous life, I was Chauncey Goss. I was not the chairman, but I remember the frustration at the time suffering, suffered by Lee County citizens and water quality advocates. We never seemed to be doing very much. But I don't think that, I just want to say this publicly to you guys, with both you and the chairman here, that I don't know of a time when the district has seemed more receptive to the concerns of Lee County. We, as you know, are the recipients of any bad thing that can happen in decision-making at the district in terms of water quality or quantity. But there's a sensitivity that I sense from you guys better than ever before, and certainly the dollars show that, whether it's the huge C-43 project or the little combination of $800,000 that you said. Well, that was very important to a lot of people that live in Lee County that would get flooded or are potentially going to get flooded if we hadn't addressed those issues. So this is just, I'm taking this opportunity. I didn't know you guys were going to be here. I'm glad you were. And thank you for all your, the concern you have shown lately, more than I've ever noticed before, and I'm just going to allow you to keep that up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy to.
Thanks, Phil. Take a quick break?
That'll be great. We'll take about a five-minute break. We'll come on back for the workshop for the budget.
One, two, three, four.
We're all here. So what we convene, obviously, we are starting the 2122 budget kickoff. Pete, thanks for being here and walking us through your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we have this, this workshop is planned every March. We come to you because it's very early on in the budget development process. And we, in this workshop, we talk about the assumptions that are going to be guiding our development of the budget and also ask for your policy direction, any input, any things you want us to consider as we go through the budget development. Right now, departmental fiscal managers, department directors are developing their, their budgets. Last week, they, was the deadline for their proposed CIP plans and they're in the early stages of the operating budget and putting that into the financial system. That'll all have a lot, lots of internal review before you see it in a couple of months. But that's kind of where we are in the process right now. So today, what we want to do is review with you some of your policies that have put us in a very healthy financial position over the last several years, some ongoing challenges, some of the key budget assumptions that we're using as we develop this year's budget. Talk a little bit about the five-year modeling we do and how we update, how and when we update those models, the schedule going forward. And then there's questions that we will ask at the end, which is, are you okay with these assumptions that we're using as we begin to develop the budget? Are there others you want us to consider as we go along? Is there anything additional you would like us to consider as we develop the fiscal year 2122 budget? I won't go through every one of these, but these are some key fiscal policy guidance that the board has directed and approved over the last eight years and really has led to the underpinning of the budget development process as we go forward. Just, just a few items. In 2014, we came up with the continuation budget process, which is the first budget we bring to you all is, is a budget of, you know, what the cost will be next year with the exact same service levels that we're providing this year. So the budget with exact same service levels from year to year. Also, you adopted, at least in the general fund, minimum reserve level of 20% and then said, you know, reserves above, above that 20%, let's look at those for specific projects. We may want to, property tax revenue generated from that, to use that to fund infrastructure projects and the first year those, that money is on the tax roll. And then the following 15, the board developed the growth increment funding methodology, which is to take new construction and real estate activity, sales back and forth, and the additional property tax revenue generated from that, to use that to fund infrastructure projects and the first year those, that money is on the tax roll. And then the following year, that reverts back to operation, operating dollars, and then you go through that process every year. And that's, that's resulted in about $60 million of additional infrastructure funding. We had a tax rate reductions, a general fund rate reduction in 2016, a library's tax, tax rate reduction in 2018. And in 2017, as you can see, we started to show you five-year modeling. We're updating those models right now and they will become more relevant as we get, there's dozens of inputs to those models and as we get more information as we go further on in the process, there's more definition to those inputs and we can give you a better of an idea of where we stand once we come back in June with the operating budget. You saw this slide at the strategic planning workshop. This just shows the history from a recession when, in the general fund alone, and we ran deficits in other funds also, we ran a combined $172 million of deficits. Then the board through all the fiscal policies you just saw corrected that, balanced the budget in fiscal year 1314. And since then, we have run slight surpluses, have been balanced, had healthy ending reserves, and then we're also able to use excess reserves to invest those in projects. And you'll see that investment in this page.
Could you go back?
Yes, absolutely.
Good question. We seem to go 15 to 16, 16 to 17, 17 to 18. It seems to be a growth in 19 to 20, 20 to 21, we go from 461 to 460. Any input on why? I mean, if you look at all the other years, it seems to be a 10 to $20 million increase and yet property values, I, I just was curious, methodology on how you came up with that.
Yeah, particularly, so last year during this process, the board had said, we would like to see flat budgets. And flat budgets even with a, even with any potential pay increase, which ultimately happened. And so that's, that's basically what we did. We came in with flat budgets. I'm not, I don't know, recall exactly 18, 19 to 1920, why that wasn't real significant. So this is just tracking of that additional investment. You can see from 1415 on, including the growth increment fund. Kind of, there's pent-up demand every once in a while, then you kind of have to reach a level where you need to fund operations at a higher level in certain departments, depending on what's happening.
Thank you.
So this is just tracking of that additional investment. You can see from 1415 on, including the growth increment funding. And I won't go through all this, but basically this is a combination of both your growth increment funds, excess reserves from the general fund, and then one, other one-time payments that we may have had. So that's $166 million of additional investment. No tax increases there or anything else. And that was primarily made in, in four areas, public safety, transportation, which has been growth increment funded, the projects since the initiation of the growth increment funding, water quality, and then conservation 2020 replenishment. Over the last three years, we've replenished conservation 2020 by 14 and a half million. This shows taxable value from just pre-recession to the recession. Down in the process, we use projections from the state revenue estimating conference, which met in December. And, and then coming out of the recession and then the increases in the property tax base up through this year, which is at 6.96%. The, for purposes of modeling this early on in the process, we use projections from the state revenue estimating conference, which met in December. And you can see in red, those are the projections for the next six years, 4.6, 4, 4.4, as you can see. I did notice that the estimating conference will be taking up ad verum property values next Monday at another conference. So we should have a revised estimate in March and we'll get that to you as soon as they're done with that, that, that piece of business. I can tell you for our modeling projections, the, our other main property tax funds, unincorporated MSTU, library and all hazards, some of them are close to being countywide, like library, others like unincorporated MSTU or just the unincorporated area. They have all bested the countywide projection by about a percent, a percent to 2%. So for the, our projections, we've, we've added a percent to each one of these, so 5.65, 5.4 for those funds. So property tax revenues, the 4.6% is, is the projection which should change, which could potentially change later this month. And it's the largest revenue in the general fund, 73%. And then other significant revenues, this is not.
You stop right there. Now the 4.6 equals 73%.
It, it doesn't, those aren't, those are unrelated.
Good. Explain why you got them both up there in the same box.
Right. Yeah, that's a little confusing. The 4.6% is just the current estimate from the state estimating conference of property tax value increase.
I'm with you so far. And it says equals 73.
So you take total fund or total general fund revenues, all of the revenues, property taxes make up 73% of general fund revenues.
Thank you very much.
And then the, the other revenues that are significant are sales, state sales tax sharing, county revenue sharing, constitutional return funds at the end of the year, ambulance fee revenues, those are our other really big ones, make up about 27%. And I can tell you that this is, historically, this has run about 68%, 32%. So we've relied heavily in this recovery this year on property taxes because our property tax base was really strong even during COVID. And so it does make up a higher percentage of revenues this year. I expect it'll go back down to that, that 68% as things equalize with other revenues as the economy comes back.
Are the general revenues expected, other general revenues expected to be increased this year too? That column, the right-hand side.
Yes. Yeah, and I'll get to that in about a slide here, slide.
You're tricking me. You show it on one side and you don't on the other side.
Yeah.
But you're going to tell me if I'll just be still. Yes, thank you.
And just, just a refresher, your general fund is your largest single fund, it's your most discretionary dollars and it pays for a significant portion of, a significant portion of the general fund is, is not directly controlled by the, by the board. It funds sheriff's office and other constitutionals, property appraiser, clerk, courts supervisor. That makes up more than half of the general fund spending. Board departments in the general fund, 29%. And then the other is either state mandates or costs that are shared jointly between constitutionals and, and the board. And that other includes debt service, the growth increment each year, and you can see the whole list of things. Medicaid, which is state mandate, juvenile justice, state mandate, CRAs to cities. We have a CRA portion that we pay for city CRAs. So our basic expense assumptions are continuation budget only when we come back, which is what it costs to provide exact same level of services from year to year. If there's an increase in that cost, it has, usually has to go with, has, is due to growth and, and demand driven. Growth increment funding, which is 11.9 million, very close to what it was this year. And then major maintenance, we, a significant amount of major maintenance goes to maintain facilities that the constitutionals inhabit. But we always look for priority for maintenance of existing assets, particularly if there's any liability issues involved, and, and, and we have a five-year plan for that. Commissioner Mann, this is what you alluded to earlier. So the strengths this year are, our revenues are coming back. So as an example, our sales tax sharing, which runs between, it runs around 45 to 50 million a year. The, our, our monthly sales tax sharing for February of this year, which is a COVID environment, we're still in a COVID environment, is actually higher than it was February last year, which is right before COVID. So, so that's a good sign that, that we have revenues that are higher than they were this, this year than they were pre-COVID. Our COVID-19 revenue losses were not nearly as great as originally projected. So, you know, in March and April, it looked like it was going to be really bad. And then the, the economy opened back up and revenues, so we had, except we had, you know, two, three, four really bad months, but then things came back quite nicely and this year have come back very well. We, we have a debt profile that is, is low. We don't have a lot of debt. And we have healthy reserves, as I showed you before.
You would say that, obviously, in the prior chart, we've rebounded, you know, and done better than expected, as you were explaining to Commissioner Mann, but a lot of it is really a result of all the injection of stimuli in the economy, which has allowed us to do that and come back with a growth. I think when we looked at last year's bleakness of COVID, we never envisioned there'd be three separate stimulus bills to inject as much liquidity into that agro. That's why I think we've rebounded better. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, that's absolutely correct. And we see that in certain departmental budgets, which, which I'll talk about, one of those right now is, so some of the challenges coming up, general fund debt repayment, where we're paying off our general fund debt, we haven't issued any new general fund debt, but in the last few years, we're in a high, high debt repayment environment in the general fund. We have incorporated that into our modeling. You've seen all that. We've started to sync funds to help us with that. So you've seen that before, but we just need to remain cognizant of it. Transit subsidies, so not the direct allocation, the 134.5 million that we received directly from treasury, that we ran our, our programs in the community, but transit received CARES Act funds through the federal transit administration. And they received $19 million through last year's act and anticipate potentially another $12 million through this year's act. So this has done a couple of things. One is it's reduced the subsidy, taken some pressure off the general fund for the subsidy that goes to transit. And because they're using that money to operate and there's, there's, there's transit systems that are, that are doing much worse across the country, but, you know, transit revenues are down. We, and there's indication that maybe some transit state grant funding will not come through this coming year, may be reduced because of the state revenue environment. So the FTA dollars are really helping mitigating all these things and really, really keeping transit very healthy. Another challenge is road maintenance costs are increasing. The primary sources of maintenance, of operating costs in the transportation department are a portion of gas taxes and property taxes from the unincorporated area, unincorporated MSTU. We're, we're adding more roads, we're, we're adding more lane miles. Also, roads, some roads that were brand new 20, 30 years ago, they're starting to require higher and higher maintenance costs. So we're at a point now where our maintenance costs are increasing. We're seeing that, we're building that into our models, but I think it's likely we'll, we will see some higher maintenance costs in the Department of Transportation budget as we come back to you. And then same thing with buildings and major maintenance that we pay for buildings. That's particularly for the constitutionals, the buildings they inhabit and, and some that we do also, that's paid out of the general fund. We have a specific budget for that. But we are approaching some, some big major maintenance costs. An example is, next year in the budget, we'll be proposing a repiping of the Justice Center proper. So that's a more than 40-year-old building. We need to repipe that and that's a, that's a $4 million project. Additionally, ADA compliance in the courtrooms there, that's another million dollars. So you'll start, so you will see, and we factored this all in, so it, it's not a surprise, but you'll see that there's some major maintenance costs on some of, particularly our older buildings.
Could I ask about road maintenance costs? This morning, for instance, in our consent agenda, we included something called, it was a, for Randy's shop to fix roads in Lehigh and other parts of the county. But we were using a technology called micro-surfacing. Is that a new word? I don't know micro-surfacing. And is that a way of saving money?
Commissioner, no, it's not new, but yes, it is a way to save money. That surfacing is used on roadways that are not high-impact. So neighborhood roads and things like that, like Lehigh are perfect. Main, main highways, you would not use that surfacing, but it is a cheaper way to go.
In less-traveled surfaces?
Correct.
Okay. Might offset to some extent the road maintenance cost increasing he's talking about there. I'm hoping. Yes?
No, that's already been accounted for. I think not only do we have the roadway issue, we also have increased sidewalks. So the more sidewalks we add, the more maintenance you're going to have with that as well. So.
Well, that's more projects as. Well, that's more projects as opposed to increased costs.
Well, even with the amount of sidewalks we put in over the years, you have the maintenance associated with it. So that, it's coming due now, that that maintenance is coming due for that type of work.
Commissioner, I think the way we talk about what may be increase in maintenance cost for the roadways is, you know, we have to finish quantifying that. We have some number of roads that, you know, haven't required maintenance quite a long while. I don't think we're finished cataloguing all of that, so as we get a little deeper into the season, I think we'll have a better idea of which roads those are and what the costs will be.
I was just hoping that there might be a way of mitigating the increased costs.
I understand.
And I know you're thinking about that, too.
We are indeed.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
So planned expenditures, and I'd say planned in that we, we plan to present these to you, and these are things that historically, hey, we have looked at to excess reserves. The, and I'm just going to run through just, just a few of them, some of the bigger ones. Sheriff's Office had to buy $8 million worth of radios for the new digital radio system that, that Public Safety is, is putting in. They financed that, and it's a cost of 1.4 million a year, so we know we're going to have that cost for the next six years. Other sheriff's capital, so years ago, the sheriff would submit his budget, and it would have, operating capital would all be in, in the, the operating budget submittal. And it was kind of hard to figure out, wasn't real transparent, because, you know, sometimes capital was high, sometimes it was lower, the budget, though, necessarily didn't go up or down, so, and the sheriff's office likes this better, too. What we've, what we did for the last several years is, we took their capital portion out of the, and, and made that separate, you know. Tell us what your capital needs are for the coming year, just submit your operating budget, and then we funded those capital needs through, through excess reserves. That's worked very well, it's transparent, the sheriff's, the sheriff's office likes it a lot better, and, and we do also, because it's, it's just a better way of, of reviewing those, those planned expenditures. Conservation 2020 replenishment, you know, every year we come to you and, and tell you, you know, how much we have in the fund, what we, what, what properties we project, if we have some in the hopper of, you know, when, when those properties going to hit, so we have, you know, what we think is going to be the spend out of that fund for the coming year, and then talk to the board about, you know, when, how, how much would you like to replenish, replenish that fund. Larry Keiker Preserve is an example of a conservation 2020 preserve where we intend to do a lot of amenities as well as water quantity, quality projects, and doesn't have a, a separate funding source, so that will have to come through a combination of sources that we're still looking at, but Larry Keiker Preserve will have a, some, need some significant, significant funding for the natural resources side of it, for the water quality and quantity component of that project, and then the parks and recreation side for, for the amenities that we're looking at. And then each year, also public safety infrastructure, of course, we've paid for the replacement of the CAD system a few, a few years ago, the P25 project, which is the emergency radio system, taking that from analog to digital. Some projects that were, was going to still require a little bit more funding are the, the EOC, as we get the guaranteed maximum price for that, and then the CAD system, CAD Hexagon, because the sheriff has piggybacked on that, and there's going to be some costs This is just to show you, as, as I described before, this is the taxable values in the general fund and 2021, and then the, and the other funds for 2021, you can see that they outpace the increase of the general fund. So that's when we, when we model, that's why we, we use a little higher percentage for their, for their tax base increase. So we update this several times a year, this is a five-year projection, or in some cases, seven or eight-year projection, the general fund, and this is, this is representative, so this shows you what it was as of the adopted budget for this year. We're currently working on all the inputs for this model, and as we come forward with more information from the estimating conference, as the constitutionals get their, get us their budgets, as we develop all of our internal budgets, then we'll, we'll come out, come to you with, with this projection. Obviously, that you want your total revenues to be, be on, higher than your total expenditures. You can see we have a reserves line there, and then designated reserves, which are almost all completely your 20%, 20% minimum reserve is your designated reserves. You have a couple other minor designations in there right now, but, but that's the main one. And then the 20% level, which you can see during the higher debt and then, debt environment grows some, but once you pay off that debt in '27, '28, it pops up, so you'll see that, that, that come up. That's, that's a few years out, but, so that's a model for the general fund, and same for the unincorporated MSTU. I expect this line for your ending reserves to flatten out and to be flatter even than it was last year, so it won't keep going down, should flatten out. And, you know, the board priorities, you know, all, all play into the budgeting process and, and how we come to you with alternatives for paying for some of the things that are the results of, of these, of these action plans and workshops. And this just, this just shows you some of the major initiatives that we have going forward and that will require funding, creativity, some will require financing, but you can see a number of the other initiatives that you all have approved or are working through.
Commissioners, these, these priorities are the ones that you've identified over the last several years that we have, we, we continue to work on. With the, with our strategic planning workshop a few weeks ago, we still have to bring an agenda report back to you to codify that conversation, which may or may not modify some of these priorities, or maybe, I think, maybe some additions. I don't, I can't think of anything that's going to take these priorities and reduce them to some lower level, but I think we'll have probably a couple of enhancements there. But it's, when we go, when we come back with the, with the first draft budget, we'll be able to show, show you what that looks like.
So the planned workshops going forward is, we, we are proposing that we come back with a draft of the capital budget, a major maintenance budget, May 4th workshop. June 15th would be the first draft of the continuation budget, that, that will be after the property appraiser releases his preliminary estimate of the property tax base. August 3rd would be the second iteration of that draft operating budget, as well as of set, setting the maximum mileage rates that day. August 17th would be the final draft budget, the, the third look at the budget after further input, and then your budget public hearings on September 7th and 21st. And we're back to the questions from the beginning, so you okay with these assumptions? Are there others you want to consider as we develop the budget further? And I'll open it up to any questions.
Thank you, Pete.
You want to lead?
I got it.
Huh?
If y'all are shy. I'm not.
I'm not. But go ahead.
The subject we kicked around this morning, GS 10, that has so many possibilities, and the least of which, in my selfish interest out there right now, is not just the water, but the recreational opportunities. But on what we have planned so far, and I appreciate what Jesse showed us, that overhead of what it, that's a, but that was only a concept. Budget-wise, there's, there's really nothing that, that brings that forward within the next decade, as far as the memorandum of understanding with Lamson. I would just ask that, do we consider doing something to bring that in to at least on a radar screen, the recreational opportunities out there, at least in planning or designing? I don't expect it to be built, I mean, because the Lamsons got to do stuff out there before we can even input our recreational opportunities around some of their stuff, but there's got to be something other than just a decade in the future. That's what BOMA was, a decade in the future, and we went a whole 10 years after buying it before we finally got around to doing something functional with it, so, I don't know. Tell me, are you guys okay with a 10-year delay before we really start moving towards something functional out there for, for those folks, or would you join me in trying to put something on the radar?
One thing that was interesting in the previous presentation was the fact, you'll see this in our lifetime, and Frank and I were talking about that, you know, when you think of something in your lifetime...
That's okay, we're ambasay.
When, when you see it in your lifetime, it, it changes the dynamic. I'll actually see this, you know, I won't be sitting from the other side of the grass. So I agree, I, I think both from that discussion this morning, but also with the Keiker Preserve, the plans that Jesse and his team put together, those are pretty spectacular. And I think that component of who we are as a community is going to be a very important piece as we grow and become more attractive. A lot of people are looking at Southwest Florida, we've got to lay, lay out a plan, just not with roads and all that kind of stuff, but also these other things that really make it, you know, a community. And so I would love to see a start, putting some meat on the bones of those things, so we can talk about it in a little more definitive way. And if we can move it along, if things keep moving the way they are in a direction and this growth is sustainable, I'm all for that, so.
You know, I, I, I definitely agree with you on the, on the part that I'd like to see something done faster than 10 years from now, or 12 years from now, or whatever it was. That was kind of the reason why I went down that line of questioning this morning on the GS 10 land management plan. I guess, you know, I'm, I'm trying to think of what the right steps are to, to go about it. I'd love to see, obviously, they've shown us a really good, I, I think they've shown almost all of us a really good idea of the Larry Keiker Preserve and what that can be when it grows up and when we're done with it. I'd love to see now the funding that comes with that, you know, so how do we fund the Larry Keiker Preserve project that we want to do, and then also maybe funding options for the GS 10 project? And so what, what money do we have to work with? How much do we think any of this is going to cost? And how could you phase it over time to get it all done within a period of years? So that there are some incremental steps along the way that give the public a chance to enjoy it a lot faster than 12 years from now.
Things like canoeing and kayaking, we're not going to have to create water for it, the water's going to be there. The little bridging for hiking around between and then canoeing and kayaking. I, I think the, the initial steps to have kayak put in locations would be fairly inexpensive, because they're going to bring their own kayak, but there, there are some steps that we could make initially that I don't think are going to be very expensive, particularly the planning of them, to, to get beyond the concept and just, well, I like the way you put it, if we could see some options as what may be available, or we could consider, that would at least get something on the radar screen out there for those good citizens.
No question the finances are a piece, but to me, I just like I wrote PD and E, planning, development, execution. I mean, so how, how do we get from the planning to the design phase, you know, so we can show something in that sort of visual?
You know, as the new kid on the block, you know, certainly have gone around this and listened to your presentation, so, I mean, great job, Pete, and really what you try to do is identify the revenue, talk about the various expenditures, look at where we are on reserves, what do we have excess, and then I think what Roger was alluding to before, is codifying what our priorities are, listing them, because the priorities, you know, can go for a mile, we need to obviously prioritize and put dollars and cents to those so we can make a priority. You know, some questions, as I've sat here and, you know, y'all are going about this a little bit differently, I mean, A, and, and these are just maybe some opportunities, because that list will probably be pretty robust, and obviously, we're looking for funds. So one question would be, do we anticipate any additional revenues that may supplement or enhance the general fund from the latest stimuli bill?
Yes. The, the, the latest bill does allow you to replenish lost revenues, so I anticipate additional revenues from that, Commissioner, as well as I believe we, we developed the budget in those months that were very bad last year, and so some of our state shared revenues in the general fund, I think are probably, the revenue portion probably a little bit under-budgeted this year, so we had, we balanced and had a slight surplus this year, so I expect those revenues to come in higher, and that will enhance your excess reserves.
And, and I suspect that's what you would have done, not knowing what the world was going to be and not ever anticipating with that crystal ball, there were going to be three injections of stimuli, and the latest one certainly indicates that. And the subsidy, I think what you're going to do is recognize that the subsidy, or the strain on the general fund, will find relief that we probably never have found before. The second area, so there'll be some additional revenue from there, you know, and I guess what I'm trying to do is, in your model, do exactly what you're trying to do, but just see where there are some opportunities for additional revenue, and then what are our projects and, and our expenses and our things that we need to do. The second thing that I've always been amazed with is 20%. I've just always asked that question, I guess, you know, 20% reserves. And the most fundamental thing, and many municipalities have had these discussions, I've led Florida League of Cities and whatever, the calendar's 12 months long, fiscal year ends September 30th, we start collecting money November 30th, it's two months, you do it by math, it's 16.6%. So I'm just always curious, at Sanibel, we're at 17%, here we're at 20. I guess I ask the question, why? We seem to have adequate reserves across it, we have excess reserves. Again, I just ask the question, you know, as, when was the last time you had a discussion on that? Because there's some opportunities, it might only be a little bit, again, a little bit extra coming from stimuli, a little from here, and, and potentially, property values, I think is really going to be the big surprise, because depending on that number at, at 4.6, we could potentially be at property values that might be back to recession days, because if we get a number at 7.3, we're going to be over the recession days. And obviously, the difference between 4.6 and 7.3. So again, trying to do it on the back of an napkin, kind of what I do, so here's some additional revenue from stimuli, okay? Here's some potential, you know, do we need to have as many as we do in reserves? Because we have a lot of reserves in the enterprise funds as well, and then in addition to that, there might be some opportunities from additional revenue. Then we listen to what our desires are from a priority. Roger codifies what we said at the project, talk about this, and say, okay, we have an extra $10 million, because that's kind of what this model does, that's exactly what you do. What we're trying, what I'm trying to do is zero in on what are truly, and I like your format, it's just that this year is a little unusual, because we made projections based on last year being really abysmal, and I think everything has come out to be better. So there may be, you know, 3 million here, 3 million, I mean, there might be an opportunity, so when Commissioner Mann brings up a GSI, I might say, we can't do that, we have all these priorities, but there might be some opportunities for more dollars, we might have the desire to do some more things, is all I'm advocating for, if that makes any sense, what I was saying.
No, I, I think you, you got right to, one of the things I've been thinking about a lot, when you think about the reserves and then the excess reserves, and I, I do think at some point, we could probably have a pretty healthy discussion just on the reserves, the excess reserves, how much do we need to keep, how much, I mean, we, we can look back at now, now we've got a track record with Hurricane Irma, how much did we lay out for Hurricane Irma, how quickly did we get reimbursed from Hurricane Irma? We had the blue-green algae crisis, we had, you know, all that, the red tide crisis, we've had now a global pandemic, and, and yet we still are very blessed because of our good financial management to be sitting here with well over $100 million in our general fund bank account to answer that rainy day. Well, the, you know, the rainy days come a few times, and we didn't, turns out we didn't need to use that much. So now, you know, part of being good stewards of the taxpayer dollars is to not just hold it and earn probably very little interest on it, which is what we're earning, because we've got to keep them in such safe investments, but is to also do something with that money, or not collect it from them, because, you know, you don't want to collect too much from them. So, yeah, I think, I think we could have a good discussion on the reserves, how much do we really have above what we need, and then prioritize that money for some of the projects, yeah, that we've talked about.
Come up with the list, I mean, one of the unorthodox things that we did, and again, it's used a lot more in the private sector, is in my tenure during Sanibel, Irma hit pretty hard, and, and obviously depleted reserves, where we weren't in a position to what we would do in our budget cycle, is we would go through reserves, whether it was insurance or environmental initiatives, whatever it is, and then we replenished those. But because of Irma, we weren't able to do so, so we did something that was a little unorthodox, is Sanibel went out and got a line of credit, okay, which obviously was their safety valve, because we recognized that we couldn't increase reserves back to the way they were. reserves back to the way they were. We had a receivable, which was FEMA, knowing that, and we just had the comfort of a line of credit that if we needed to draw upon it and the storm came, we could, knowing that what we pledged was obviously the potential reserves. But they didn't even need us to pledge the reserves, we just came up with an unorthodox thing. So we've been through a lot of different things here, and if people feel comfortable, it is taxpayer money that we're holding. It is a conversation, if you go into the most simplistic, people have asked me on the campaign trail, how do you come up with 20%? Your revenue stops in September, you start it back in November, two months is 16 and a half percent, why 20%? Just some questions, and, you know, when you think about it, that's a valid question. So all I was trying to do is come up with a summary of the opportunities for where there might be potential additional revenues, and what are our projects in doing this? But your entire review that you've gone through has kind of put us in the buckets. I'm just trying to have more clarity in revenues where there are some really conservative assumptions. And then I think the conversation is about what do we do? But in part of the discussion, I think, as you come up with the dollars and cents, I think reserves are a great conversation, because to echo what Commissioner Hammond said, we've been through so many different aspects, and, you know, listen, Floyd, yourself, and Commissioner Mann, you got here, and certainly, it was a different county at a different time, but we've kind of gone through some pretty big events. And I certainly would love a conversation, or at least some consideration for an option to look at if we brought reserves down a 16 and a half, 17%. And again, what that might look like, what revenue might look like if we get this. You're talking about some adjustments, just to see what we have, and then we could have a really robust conversation. And codifying what Roger had talked about gives us an opportunity, because the list is gonna be long at some point in time, why do you put priorities? Here's what money we have, and here's 1 through 5, we all agree upon it, that's what we can do. I mean, that's kind of my, in the back of my envelope, thoughts.
And Commissioner, we can absolutely bring that back to you, yeah. We can bring you back a model that would show lower general fund reserves. And what you say is, we've had internal discussions about that, is, you know, the 20% level too high.
Yeah, I'm just trying to look at, you know, A, you know, some additional stimuli money, B, reserves, C, property values, maybe at, you know, 7% or 7, you know, just what is that total? Because it's gonna be a combination of those three with more dollars and cents. And then, as Roger and we all from the strategic planning codify our list, and we look at, okay, what are our challenges in front of us? And we have a lot of challenges. But, you know, we might look at it a little bit closer and more accurately. And if there's ever a time to do this, to Commissioner Hammond's point, we've sustained some pretty unbelievable events, including a global pandemic, and, you know, we're probably, the envy of a lot of counties and a lot of cities. Listen, I can tell you, as someone that left the city, it was not fun to furlough, it's not fun to do the things I had to do a year ago. So thank you all for all you've done.
Mr. Chairman, we need to do everything that you've just described. And I don't see any way that we have, we've been living with 20%, but it's not chiseled in stone. I mean, every time three of us get together, we can alter that. And based on a review, updated review, we may choose this year to change that. And that might free up some substantial dollars to do a number of things, none of which we were talking about here today. But just for now, to give them direction for our next budget get-together, I haven't forgotten the GS 10 project yet, and I still would like to be able to do, I think, what I heard you suggest, look at some models of some components we can chip away at and see how a project would come together out there, whether it's just a boat ramp, or it's picnic tables, or bathrooms, or what could happen rather sooner than later.
Ray, you're in.
Yeah, I feel the same way. I am so excited about where we are today as a result of the efforts of those that came before us and put us in a position. My vast world was comparing a market that was working into other markets, you know, who are we competing against, what's their status, and so on and so forth, you could play that, as companies make decisions that are coming here, both individuals and companies. And when you look at us, where we are, we've got a strong financial base, which allows us to do certain things, we've got a beautiful environment, we're working on those things. Quality of life is super important to people, our tax rates are drawing people here. But we took a pretty bold step this morning with Health and Human Services. And while we look at all the good, you know, when I sit there and look at TV at night and I see cities with these encampments and everything that's going on that affects those people, how do you deal with that? How do you dig yourself out of that mess? And how do you turn it around for the people affected? How do you turn it around for the community? So I think we made a bold statement this morning, and I hope in the budget process going forward, that we put an importance on that going forward. I want us to be different. I want us to lead the way, I want people, and I think the next generation that are coming up is a little bit more esoteric maybe than some of us in the past, they want to see that. They want to see involvement in the community, they want to become part of the fabric of the community. And I think that's gonna make a difference. So congratulations to advancing that this morning, to the team that put that together, and I hope that's a part of the budget process going forward, too. I think that's a piece that makes holistically something we'll be very proud of.
And along those lines, I mean, one of the conversations that I talked about at the board and talked about in our going is, we did take a bold move this morning, it was $1.9 million we took out of excess reserves. But there's also realistic conversations that have taken place, started to take place with Senator Rubio's office, which we were allocated $24.2 million, okay, in rent and utilities, and we're never gonna be able to use it the way it is. So if there's any way to potentially even, you know, again, COVID has walked us into some areas and probably aided to the homeless situation we have. So the conversation I've had with their office is, you know, can we see as we're doing these various adjustments in stimulus and budget amendments, can we potentially see carving out some money in something different? Because the requirements are really narrow, okay? And unfortunately, you're not gonna be able to use that money. So we did something that was pretty bold and did it our own, but I can't imagine we're the only community that has an uptick in this area of homelessness that certainly is probably derived either indirectly or directly from COVID. So can you look at that? So, you know, there are some opportunities, and I commit, you know, was happy with Commissioner Hammond, but, you know, I also want us as opportunities with revenue, there might be some opportunity there to recapture that if there was a reallocation or an amendment in the budget. I agree with what you're saying, it's temporary, I like that we outsourced it, I like that we're going to, you know, nonprofits to do that, they have the bandwidth, they do whatever. It also gives a situation that, you know, we're moving in that direction. But there are some opportunities, I don't want to, and I'm gonna continue to make sure I update this board on those conversations, because I think there's a greater opportunity, no different than when you had karst dollars, we had to extend that for a year, we're just not gonna use the money. So if we could somehow have it allocated a little bit differently, and there's a particular need.
We have a incredibly generous community. Absolutely. I think that when they see leadership coming out of this team as one, they will get on board, because people are just gonna throw money at stuff, hoping it fixes it. We get some direction, we get some leadership here, I think we'll be very surprised at how the community responds to that and gets on board, which will mitigate some of the costs going forward or help be accretive to that. So I'm pretty optimistic about that.
I mean, from my two cents, if we could, Roger, if we could tweak some of the things that I talked about as far as, you know, what the stimulant might do, what we might do, what it would look like if we brought reserves to 16 and a half, let's just say, and what we might do if revenues came in, you know, or ad valorem came in, or values came in at like 7.5, just to look at what if, or you might even say, you know, each percent is a million dollars, a million and a half dollars. Look at those, and then if you can codify what we talked about in strategic planning, so we can come up with that list, and then bring it to us, because then we'll say, okay, here's some additional revenue, here's the projects, and this is what it looks like. And I think we can do exactly as you indicated, Commissioner Mann, let's bring all those in a summary cheat sheet, we've got in the hot, but, you know, okay, so reserves are another $3 million if we adjust them to this. Stimuli looks like it's X millions of dollars. And the opportunity, if property values are up by a percent, it's, you know, and then here's the codification of the things we talked about, the strategic planning, and here's what it looks like, so we can make priorities and move forward. I think it just clarifies revenue, gives us an opportunity to look at projects, identifies the expenses, and we make some real policy decisions to give Roger direction.
You know, I also would like to see as part of that, what-if scenarios would be, looking at the revenues and the property appreciation, just, you know, what would it do to our revenue at the rollback rate?
Yep.
What would it do to our revenue at halfway to the rollback rate? Just give us some of those scenarios as well, so that we can see, you know, if we really outperform on the values, you know, and it looks like we may not need to collect all that money, then I think, you know, for one year, we obviously take this on a year-by-year basis, maybe you do, maybe you don't collect all of it, maybe you look at a millage reduction for a year.
You must be in my head. Because one of the things that you might want to consider is you might have that opportunity and say, okay, rollback rate's gonna cost us $10 million, okay? And just come up with a number, we used to do that in Sanibel. Okay, how do we get there? And to your point, you know, well, if property values are at 7.5%, that's $4 million. We reduce reserves, you know, 2.5 million, you know, by 2.5%. It's another, so you kind of look at that and say, okay, at least two, you know, scenarios. I'm not saying, again, it's just the board. And then you look at what other opportunities and/or challenges we have, because the biggest challenge we have here is how do you balance? And that's why I wanted to bring reserves into the conversation, because we've taken every punch it possibly could take, and in my opinion, I think that we just have a reserve level that at least requires a discussion, and then with the what-ifs. But that's kind of where I was going ultimately, once I saw it on a piece of paper, you know, to go there and say, okay, what would a rollback look like? And maybe something that, you know, our growth is just not possible, but it's at least a discussion we can have.
It's interesting, listen, balance, the word balance came up, the strategic planning came up in your presentation today. It's like everything we do is so well-balanced, just individually, families, or community, you know, which is, and it's working.
Does that sound like some direction, right?
Yes, sir. If I could just give it back to you.
Sure.
That's, you know if I get it. It would, it's an exercise that we should go through that starts with identifying all the revenues.
Yep.
Both the routine that we see from one year to the next, and then the new revenues as well, and what role do they play? Now, how can they contribute to freeing up money for, to evaluate options you might consider for priorities? So it considers restricted, unrestricted, partially restricted revenues, and then adjustment of reserves. We have multiple reserve accounts, not just the general fund, we have many others as well. Do we have all of those reserves levels set at the right, at the right level? And then we start, then we go to the, you know, millage, millage exercise, and talk about percentage, at what percent reduction in the millage rate do we, what do you get? What do you get for that? And then ultimately, when you get to rollback, what happens? And then if you take it out a few years, do you find yourselves in a position of maybe having to increase the millage rate, you know, given the assumptions that we use, so just all those things to consider? So it's not a, it's a little bit complicated, but, you know, it's not that complicated. We can do that.
Yeah, and the presentation, the reason why I had to bring any of the other reserves up, because the presentation that we had was all about the general. One of the things that was in my head, and I didn't want to complicate this, was the other funds, and just, you know, there seems to be inconsistencies in their reserves and where they're at. But I didn't want to complicate the issue, just trying to simplify it, but once we have it down here, you can take it across funds. I think you summarized it great.
Yeah, yes, we can do that.
And then to wrap it up, just also, once we know what money we have to work with, is that then the point where we get that workshop together to talk about the GS 10 and the Larry Keiker Preserve and some of those other projects?
I think what you do is, you look at the codification we have from the strategic plan and any items that we're looking at, and put them on the list, and then prioritize them. Because I think the balancing act you're gonna do, and kind of what we did in Sanibel, to your point, Roger, is we did a five-year plan and say, okay, here's the ramifications, do you want to go to rollback rate, here's what it looks like, and here's some of the challenges we have in the future. There's some of your CIP challenges, here's some of the other issues you have. But you also then, as a body, look at what money you have, what choices you make, and then what decisions we want to have in projects that are a priority, and what the costs are. And that's really all we're trying to do, in a snap sheet, okay? GSI 10, it's not a great idea, it's gonna cost us $5 million, and can we fit it in what year? You might want to do it in the same way you did a five-year projection, it might be done in your lifetime, it might be year three, year four, may not be just this year.
Well, we spent $8 million with the sheriff, and we did that over, what, four or five years?
You seem to do that here, like paying off debt, you're putting away $2.5 million over a year.
But it's all on a radar screen.
Absolutely.
And we've balanced that along other priorities. Brian, thank you for continuing to come back to that subject. I've just learned about the budget process, and my experience over the years is, each time we have a meeting, the budget gets a little more chiseled in stone, and I just don't want items to be forgotten. So when we get the revenue picture, and that's critically important to any budget process, to make certain we know what dollars we have available, or that we want to make available. But I don't want us to have that conversation and forget about these priorities. And then what we're left with is every department in county government has its own little capital expenditure wish list, and those keep growing, and they move forward. I just want GS 10 to move forward along with it. A lot of people out there that, we for instance, promised, not promised, but said we would try to get them a 20-acre or a 10-acre neighborhood-type park up in the vulnerable area where the crime rate has been higher. Well, the parcels just aren't available, we haven't been able to do that. So what else can we do in Lehigh? Here's an opportunity where we in fact can do something, and I don't want to wait a decade for it.
And Commissioner, there's not.
I just want to talk about it at the same meeting that we're gonna have, all this wonderful, healthy discussion.
Really, what I was setting the table for, is trying to identify the additional revenues and/or additional reserves that we have, and then look, and then look at the projects that we have in front of us and make the decisions. Because with the excess revenue, it gives us some opportunities to do some more things that we may potentially not have thought about in the past.
I know you're trying to help me.
Your GSI. I have tried very hard.